What do you spray your pan with to keep it? And that that'll release it?
I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five Cascade City Council. We will have a call to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliphant.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hush.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Hush. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll have public comment. You have a limit of three minutes per person on agenda items and local government issues. Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. City council minutes, two, three, twenty-five. February tenth, twenty twenty-five claims, January month end financials. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? If none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Gail.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, consideration to approve Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-five, Resolution approving a board of adjustment appointment to fill a vacant term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the city of Cascade, Iowa. Is there any questions about this?
Phil wants to do her.
I think he'd be great at it.
If there's no concerns, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gail.
Second.
Second by Oliphant. Roll call.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber. Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Number eight, consideration to approve Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-five, Resolution to approve urban renewal plan amendment for the Cascade urban renewal area. Is there any questions on this?
What area is this? What?
It's seventeen fourteen, First Avenue East. BLM Rentals, that area.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant. Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Number nine, consideration to approve Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-five, Resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with BLM Rentals LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
I did give you guys a copy of the proposed development agreement and Buck also has a copy of that.
Is there any questions? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Delaney. Roll call.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Number ten, reports.
Very grateful you have my report in front of you. Just wanted to let you know that we got our new laptops. Thanks to Mike, we got everything up and running. Couple slight glitches, but everything seems to be working real well, so. Just I think Brad started using his on, really on Monday after we got everything. So today will be the first day he's actually got GPS. We had a little issue with the GPS.
Little unknown factor that we didn't know about, about their software that they actually use on there when it comes to GPS. It's a little more finicky than. Most things.
But.
But it worked.
Yep, got it figured out. It works, so. Any questions?
Would you just do a reminder with the upcoming snowstorms for people, please, with the road, like parking and stuff?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Great. And even now, too, please, Fred?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, we could do that. We can get something typed up because I think it's actually supposed to start maybe late tomorrow night. So, yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully Mrs. is.
Yeah, hopefully changes.
Never know.
Deanna.
I don't really have anything more to report than what's in my report, so.
Just a little thing. It was brought to my attention by a couple people up in Oak Hill with the blowing things on recycling day, that it gets in their farm fences and on their property. What, what's the solution for that?
Different type of truck.
Yeah.
Taking the front load trucks out there. They need to bring a side load truck, so they just grab the container and throw it in the side instead of having it go up over the top.
When you dump it is when the wind gets it. It isn't from them sitting out and the.
And it's not the garbage, it's the recycling.
It's the, yeah.
When they tip them all into that big container, and when that big container goes up and the wind grabs it, it's gone.
There's enough distance between.
I agree with you. However, I also, like, driving the kids to school last week when it was super windy on Thursday, if the containers are overflowing and the lid's not on flat flush, I mean, it was all over the road before the trucks had even been through there. So it is, I think we just need to do maybe another city reminder about people need to make sure that the lids can close because that is in the agreement with Republic. I'm happy to put, we have an Oak Hill Facebook page. I know Oak Hill's notorious for this just because it's so windy out there. But I can put a post out in our Facebook group, our development Facebook group, asking people to please be cognizant of that. Because I mean, those farmers, I got a call from one of the farmers as well, and they are justifiably upset. It was a mess out there. I felt really bad for them. And I know that the one that I talked to was very, very calm, very nice, very respectful, but I know the other one was pretty hot. So he, the one called to warn me about it. But I do think that people need to remember that the lids on their recycling and garbage should fit flush. There are people out in our neighborhood that have two recycling bins, they, two toters, because they know that they have a lot of recycling. That is an option that we learned about when Lisa was here, so I think that that's something, too.
I definitely think we need to talk to Republic and have them use the side load trucks and not the front loads. That's huge.
And does Monty have, because Monty uses Republic as well, don't they? And they bag, they have to bag theirs.
I don't believe that. Maybe they do, but I can't believe a recycling center would take that.
No, as far as I, is my understanding, and this is my understanding of recycling, is that if there is a bag, if anything's bagged in that thing, it gets straight to the dump.
Okay. I don't, I don't, I don't think.
It won't even end up in recycling.
Because I want, and I wonder if there's confusion about it's the garbage that has to go into a particular bag in Monty, not the recycling. So that could be the misconception, too.
Yep.
Because recycling gets put out and, you know, going through. If it's in a bag, it's just gonna be an extra step for them, and I know they don't want that.
Yeah, I don't mind.
So you think the majority of it is lost between going up and.
Well, like she said, they're, they're overflowing, but, you know, other than that, but yeah, it's when it goes over the top.
Because I've, I've put a piece of duct tape over the top if it's windy, but I don't think you can be doing that all the time either.
Well, and that also, I mean, if you got a piece of duct tape on there and they go to pick them up with that arm and it sticks, then that also causes problems, too.
No, the, the weight of the product inside.
If it isn't enough, they don't.
Oh, yeah.
You don't want people to be doing that, right?
Yeah, it causes an issue, too.
Nobody, say, reach out to Republic and see if they can.
See if they have a solution. Anything else? If not, we'll go to fiscal year twenty-six budget discussion.
I was just, I was your public comment thing and read through it so fast and just seeing none. I didn't even have as time to perk my ears up.
You're still sleeping.
Probably up earlier than you anymore. Can I do that now or?
Or does he have to wait till the end?
No, now's the good time.
Tyler Hunt, six fifteen, Second Avenue Southwest. One thing I'd like to ask about before that one, real quick question. I always wondered and just haven't asked, but why, does anybody know why we pay rent on like thirteen and change for the water meter? And then we pay nineteen on rent for the water meter, the same meter, for our waste bill?
Okay, what now? What, I'm sorry.
We pay rent fees for our water meter twice.
We pay a monthly meter charge for our water.
Right, it's like thirteen, thirty, two, three.
Well, it actually just went up to seventeen, okay?
Which are, but we, our sewer, our waste bill, we pay, I think it's nineteen? Why do we rep the same water meter twice on two different bills?
It's not, it's a, it, one's a monthly meter charge and then the other is just a monthly administration fee or whatever.
Okay, I just thought, okay, I just thought that the way it was oriented was rendered, but I, actually, I just didn't know. My second thing, it's really the reason I'm here, or my wife's instructions, too. I know it's been several years since I've been aware that it's been talked about, but chickens in town, is there enough of a change on the council? I guess, what would we need to do to allow chickens in town? I know, you know, arguments whether it's noise, odor, whatever, but there's towns that manage it. I've worked in Animalza for eight years now. And I never had a single call, not just me, but anybody at PD regarding chickens. And to be honest, I didn't even know that we had a chicken allowance in Animalza until I went to day shift two years ago and I started seeing the coops around. Just because overnight she didn't see them. But that's how, it just, nobody ever called. Nobody had a problem, nobody, nothing. And they, you know, the ordinance in Animalza is pretty good with even regulates what you can make the coops out of. It can't be OSP or anything, so it doesn't absorb any newer. It, it's apparently a very good set of regulations because there's been no problems. I know Monticello, Dr. Monticello officer, he's been there almost twelve years and he's never had a single issue with it. A single call or report of any problems regarding chickens in any way, shape, or form, so.
I think that's a great idea. Deanna, is it possible to call and get, like, what their ordinances are in Animalza and Monticello?
And actually, in my previous city, we allowed them.
I can print it off and give it to somebody, too.
I mean, there's usually an application process and the city council has to approve it and then there's regulations.
Obviously, not saying you can come out ahead, but recently, it's just coincident, the price of eggs and all that stuff going on. But the big thing for us is just.
The kids like it.
The kids like it. Like, you're up on the farm, have chickens, and it's just something I want to continue and I think you'd have a lot of support for it, so. Just as far as next up, like, does, do you guys do it or do we, like, get signatures or something? Just drop everything off the mark, so.
We can, we can get a bunch of things together and we can talk about it at the next meeting. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, you ready for Phil?
Do you want to go over anything in your budget or we can just jump in?
Do you want to do Phil first?
Well, Phil is just here for questions. I mean, we can, like. If you want to get the PowerPoint, please, Mike. I'm sorry? I don't, but it's gonna be up on the board, I mean, the PowerPoint, and I can give you your budget if you want, if you don't have it, but.
Got what I presented.
So do you want to actually go through anything on your budget? I can, I mean, the big thing, I guess, we need to just talk about a little bit is the salaries.
That's probably our big thing. Generally, my budget over the past eighteen years has not changed a whole lot. Few things have gone up, but depending upon what we needed. We're not due for a car until twenty seventeen, so Brad's car is, what's that?
Twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven, yeah. See, Brad's, Brad's twenty seventeen, so we're not due until twenty twenty-seven. And I know I've said this over the last few years, kind of getting the ball rolling, that I think we started out four or five years ago. I said about, about four or five years before I retired. I'm now right around the two-year mark. So, and I know in last year's budget, we also talked about possibly hiring a third full-time officer. I think instead of doing that this year, maybe put that into next year's fiscal budget, looking at that. Kind of what we're looking at is bringing up our wages in the police department to be a little bit closer to what other communities are paying. And I know a lot of other communities, sheriff's departments have taken a huge increase over the last few years, but my, my hope and plan, and again, this is a hope and plan, that we've got a good guy in Brad. And in two years, I want him to stick around. I want to give him a reason to stick around here, I want him to grow up in town. And I think by raising our wages, I think that's gonna be a big, big push in the right direction.
So just so you guys are aware, if you go to the tab for expenses and then the third page in, I believe that's changed from what's in your book. We actually increased the salaries a little more. After meeting with the members of the personnel committee, we increased those. So the salaries is actually one fifty-eight oh eighty. And then that also then affects your FICA Medicare and IFRS totals. So everything in, I mean, the overall increased like seven thousand or, so. Just because, like Fred said, we had talked about adding a third officer, but because of him planning to retire. But I think if we wait another fiscal year and do that, and this year get the police wages up to where they should be, that will be beneficial for all of us, I think.
Yeah, I think the longevity for trying to, like I said, trying to keep Brad around and possibly hiring another officer that's got some experience next year. Looking into that, I think our, our chances of getting somebody that has a little bit of experience that might even have some knowledge of Cascade might be a lot greater. And I know the last three years, we've had a lot of counties, a lot of cities right around us trying to, trying to get Brad to come their way, so. I want, frankly, I want to see him stay here.
And then overall, though, I mean, other than that, really, his budget, the police budget stayed the same, or minor increases, just for a couple of things.
I think insurance was one that, that increased a little bit. I think you put in there a little extra because there was.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. And we got our computers purchased this year out of this year's budget, so we won't have to worry about that next year. Maybe possibly looking at a desktop, but that's gonna be a lot cheaper than the two laptops and docking stations.
Definitely.
Any questions?
Questions?
All right, if there are any questions, you can all have my number, too. You can call us, or Deanna and I have been working on this together. She's put a lot of numbers together for me, too, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, since Phil is here, here, we're going to jump to the departments that affect him, and that would be this general fund, street, road use, and water sewer. So turn to page five under the expenses. In this area, we have money budgeted for some street improvements. And we kind of have went through a list of some priorities. There is money budgeted for storm sewer repairs. We also have money budgeted for doing some crack sealing. And then it is the year that we need to buy a new snowplow. So we have a price of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we can buy the chassis first and then the box, so there is money in fiscal year twenty-five for the chassis. And then the box will come out of fiscal year twenty-six. So if you look at capital outlay for this year, there's almost a hundred thousand dollars, but we're gonna use eighty thousand of that to help with the purchase of the chassis out of this particular department.
Phil, can you kind of go over the street improvements, what, what's planned? What projects have been. Yeah, what's, I mean, are we just?
I, I don't know how much money you'd like to do for that.
Right now, we just have four.
Talk about some overlay.
When you get driving around, the deterioration of the streets, we can't even keep up with it.
No.
You, you drive around at night and you look at the settled spots from excavations, the shadowing? I don't know. Where, where do you begin?
I'm just gonna pick a couple and do them.
And, and we can't afford to do a Garfield type?
No, no, no. We, and we need to crack seal the ones that are still workable. Yes, savable, like plot of court. They need it again. I mean, I'm sure Oak Hill's got cracks out there.
Yeah, there is. I seen some today.
You know, the, the better pavement we have, let's try to save that. The seal coat stuff is gonna have to be dealt with, but I think we need to try to save what we got and, like Phil said, pick a street, do it, and.
Yeah. And the other thing is where there's been asphalt patches put in to go and route the perimeter and crack seal them before they open up and. Where, where are we for the worst sewer and water lines every place up here?
Yeah, I mean, you don't know where the worst is until you dig them up. I mean, like, down, down there on Fourth that we did last year.
It was just one after another.
Yeah, we, every time we fixed it, it kept breaking. We could run into one of them tomorrow, but we have no idea where it's at, you know, until you get into it. But obviously, you guys know, we've had a lot of breaks this year. I don't know if it's something to do with the weather, if it's just catching up to us, the old infrastructure. Yeah, it's just another year older because it's all four-inch lines, well, most of it, but. Yep. I mean, when we open them up, obviously, to fix them, you can see some pitting in the pipe on the outside and stuff, but overall, they don't look bad from the outside, but.
But the inside can be bad.
Yeah. I don't know what the real answer is, but obviously, we can only do so much. I realize that. But I think we need to, I'm sure there's, we gotta look into some grants or something because we're just getting behind the eight ball with the streets. Yeah, but we also need to look at Lysandra and Mark. Oh, oh, exactly, yeah, exactly. We could, we could do a street this year and we could have three buses there next. Right, right. We can look at the streets that don't have the mains underneath them to redo now and get our water mains done. You know, find, find something out there to help our waters. So. Yeah, this summer, we plan on disconnecting the two dead-end mains. We got that budgeted, right? And we had breaks on, not dead-end, double mains. We had breaks on places where there's double mains, two places. This summer, we want to get them disconnected. So obviously, that eliminates some, but. Three, four blocks, pipe. It'll help. Yeah, it can't hurt. And then the other thing was is a service line inventory with the. Lead lines, the galvanized lead. I don't know, have you guys discussed that yet?
No, because you, we wanted, I wanted you at a meeting, so we can do it at the twenty-fourth or the next, the first meeting in March.
But we got, we got money's budgeted to do some of them, too.
Um, maybe. I think we need to eliminate that double main first.
Right.
So, and we need to be a little conservative this year with our water fund, so we.
Catch up?
Yeah.
One of the double mains, just a couple streets over, correct, going up that way? Where's the other one at, Phil?
Down by the pool.
One going down by the pool, and then there's one up on Dillon. Like, past Pat Weber's house, up in that area. Actually goes, what would that be, Fourth goes up?
Yeah.
Fourth, Fourth and then up Dillon. So.
The other thing we need to do is seal the bridge. We haven't done that in how many years?
Well, we're up for a bridge inspection later this year.
Is that on the inspection?
Sure.
I think we can, well, we should just wait and, because I, like, I think this is the year we get our bridge inspected, the bridges inspected.
They were just done.
Was it in twenty-three? I thought I saw twenty-three.
They must have fixed, huh? We did some work on the one going out to.
Custom precast. I don't think they evaluate.
That was the county bridge. No, that was ours, but. That was ours.
I don't think they evaluate ceiling, sealing the bridge.
No, I'm just, the.
They're looking for structural.
The fence itself doesn't look very good down there. It's really starting to rust at the bottom, I noticed tonight.
Be nice to know how often we're supposed to be doing it. That's probably been at least ten years.
To seal the bridge, you mean?
Yeah.
I can find out.
Because there's a company from Davenport last time, isn't it? Flat Cities.
Where, who did the inspection?
No, no, no.
Oh, sealed it, you mean?
I know, I know the question's been asked before and we've never gotten an answer. How often that should be done?
Okay.
Is there any corrosion on the expansion joints on either end up underneath?
Yeah. I haven't looked at it lately, but I'm assuming the inspector looks at all that.
You'd hope, yeah. And they do.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when you do a new snowplow truck, you do stainless steel box?
Yeah.
They last?
Yep, this, this one will have a wing, little wing. How's the new blade working out? Cracked it. Did you? Just one section? How's it working out other than that? Perfect. Everybody loves it. It's quiet. Anybody on that side, tell. It's quiet. I got a few comments. Snowplow, I never heard it go by this morning. The street was plowed.
It's good.
Which, yeah, they're nice for the driver and obviously, it's.
How many manholes is there that are protruding?
Yeah, that's the problem. Yeah, that's probably got it.
I mean, is it the actual manhole or the, or the concrete surround?
Yeah, the street probably sinks around them more so than them even.
When I walk around, see anyone around here, it's usually the concrete sticking up out on the street more than the manhole.
The concrete around the manhole?
Yeah. It just seems like that's where it kind of sits up out of there, you know?
That'd be good to have a list of them and if there's some of them that you could mill that edge. Because there's nothing worse than going long plowing and hitting one of them.
I think they're kind of like that up at Oak Hill, too, in the new area there.
Yeah, a lot of them are starting to protrude. Yeah, Monroe called me. Yeah, Monroe called me today, the plow people. And he was sending out the quote. I never did get a... I told him to send me a budget number. I never did get one from him. And he said, when are you planning on wanting this truck? I said, well, probably next fall. He said, we're booked until fall of '26. Got 400 trucks sitting on the hill already to build.
400.
Wow. They're busy. But obviously, we're gonna get two bids. Henderson.
I was gonna say, yeah, Henderson.
So...
400.
This is something we'll have to consider if we get the pricing, you know, lead time.
I think as a council, we need to, rather than just be repairing things as they break, I think we need to start putting a plan together for... I mean, typically, most counties and wherever usually have a five-year plan and start budgeting money accordingly. Because, I mean, just to throw up our arms and say, everything is, you know, is getting old and whatever, we need to be on top of this. And I think at least a five-year plan, of course, that can get changed because of necessity, but... I think it's one of those things, at least we know, you know, we prioritize things and try to take care of the budget for them accordingly.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is, but it don't look like we'll ever get there with the rate structure we have for water, to build, put in water mains. So I don't know if we don't do general fund stuff and take the general fund money and use it or...
Just, it's not feasible, I mean, to do the infrastructure underground. We don't have that kind of money. That's why I'm saying, we gotta go out and try to hopefully find some grants to do that, to get extra money to do these projects. Because we're getting to the point where our streets are sold, getting sold dilapidated in our infrastructure, even our sewer, you know? Everything is getting to the point where it needs it. Yeah, I agree, we need a five-year plan, but we're behind, we're so far behind right now. It's, we gotta try to find extra money somehow.
I guess, is there grants or is there programs or...
On the water side, there almost has to be.
I know they had that big, they had that big bill that went through. There might be federal grant money out there that we might be able to get, but I don't know how much.
And I don't know if there's any more money left.
That infrastructure bill?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we used that, various forms of that. We did back of Cheryl's Flower, whoever, that was quite a bit of work there. And then some would go into 136 South as well. I think we used up everything that we had there.
It just doesn't take long. I mean, when you start diving into that stuff, it just doesn't...
Things are so expensive. You know, when we fix a water main, we see what's on the outside. You don't see what's on the inside.
On the in, yeah.
And you've showed that before with these pipes.
That's an eye opener when you see the interior.
And we know that the fire hydrants don't put out the pressure they should in a few spots, so we know that pipe is down to nothing.
Down, yeah. Yeah, we've built a lot of nice stuff in the last 10 years in this town. That people can see. Now we need to go after the stuff we can't see.
Yep, that's the hard part.
Yep.
You drive over it, but you don't see it.
Yep.
And, you know, you think of the streets in the southwest corner are terrible, but then you look at the newer ones in Conrad subdivision and you look at the deterioration of those. If those are, you know, if the newest ones are getting bad...
You have a look how old that subdivision is.
Well, and it's what, 30?
Yeah, you gotta remember that. That's pretty good street life, really.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
You know, you get 20 years out of that, that's a good street.
So, yeah, I guess we'll just budget what we can and...
Look for money.
...come up with a plan and...
Okay, so then if you jump to page 23, 24, that's actually the road use fund. There is, again, money, 30,000 budgeted for street maintenance. So we have money in road use and then money in the general fund street department to help with like street maintenance and doing some of the streets. So a part of it can come out of either fund. Again, there's money budgeted next year to help with the snowplow box. That's the 60,000.
So here's Indiana, we are gonna order the chassis before July or...
Yeah, I think, I think, because we have money. I have money budgeted for that. So you need to, I would like you to get actual quotes, get two quotes, bring them back the next meeting or the next meeting for council to approve, and then we can get the chassis ordered. So the money comes out of this year's budget.
Okay.
How many different vendors can you solicit for a chassis quote?
We're just gonna do the two in review, but unless you got something else.
No, I was just wondering, is there other, anything else that would fit your needs?
Kenworth in there now, isn't there?
The what?
Satellites, storage. I was gonna do Freightliner International, but if you guys want something else, let me know. We gotta have somewhat of an ease to get it fixed.
Yeah, the...
Okay, other than that, I mean, most of it pretty much stayed the same. And then we can jump to water, which is on page 36.
Do you have any needs building, maintenance-wise? Nothing?
The shop, the roof's getting a few leaks in it here and there. City shop, I'm sure it's gonna need a new steel roof. Not crazy, this fuck spot's starting.
Water, let's see. Like I said, we have 45, between 25 and 45, we have about $70,000.
What page are you on?
Oh, page 36.
36.
To take care of the, eliminating that double main over on Tyler Street. Well, I have 45 for contract labor, but then I have 25,000 budgeted for professional fees, so... I mean, we have 70,000 there that we can fight with.
Can we do that without engineering?
You shouldn't need an engineer.
Oh, yeah, we don't need engineering.
No, we don't need no engineer.
Yeah.
And then I had, we have 5,000 budgeted for, because we talked about replacing a fire hydrant. Oh, the one over by the pool.
Yep.
Still have to take one home, put a new one on the new main.
Hold on, I'll put a new one in over there. Because we're gonna use that one at the pool that time. We're gonna put extensions on it and stuff.
And then I budgeted 20,000 for capital equipment, so we can always, that's, that 20,000 is to help with the snowplow box also for next year.
Should be saving money on snow removal this year.
This week.
Did you really just say that? You're gonna knock on wood real fast.
That's it. Good luck.
15 years still coming our way now.
We got money we put away every year for full removal.
For what?
Full removal.
Full maintenance.
Yeah.
Full maintenance. How much is in that fund then?
Yeah.
I just know we probably should do five. You know, because we had that big spend on six. And five, which is over six, there would be none at the same time.
What do we have for bad manholes?
As far as...
The old brick ones?
There's plenty of them left.
There is.
And as far as that goes, yeah, we can, I mean, we got money budgeted to do a manhole every year, I think. Road use, but surely we do this year too. And we could contract one of them off. A lot of time you do this one, then this one caves in.
Right.
Wastewater system, I mean, a belt to handle it.
Yeah.
My theory is a way to tell we need to go, but never hurts to do one, I guess. But then if you go and do the street, you might have to change the cone and the top.
Yeah.
Do it in now.
Phil, what's the status on Fourth? Just Alphabert Cryer, that intersection on the south.
As far as the crown?
No, that, the hole that opens up.
Keeps...
In the intersection.
That storm, yeah, we haven't filled it lately, but I'm sure it'll keep sucking.
Do you have any idea? I mean, there's two manholes.
There's a, there's a suck hole in the manhole. There's a track there where it was kinda formed up and poured, you know? I think there's like three pipes going in it, four maybe. And basically, that, all the intakes on that corner are in bad shape. So for us to fix the intersection up...
That's just a small part of it.
Yeah. And then if you go to do the street, you set your intakes at the wrong level. You know, we were kinda hoping, but I don't know, we'll get there, that we could do that street. You know, totally water sewer, storm.
Going north-south, correct.
Yep, yep. And then get rid of that crown, you know, because if you're gonna take that crown out, you're gonna be changing a lot of elevations.
Yeah, playing roller rolls and everything.
Any idea why it's crowned like that or...
I have no idea.
Years of when it was gravel and they just started seal coating it, the way a lot of our streets are.
Had enough their line, water lines or sewer lines are shallow or...
Shallow, yeah.
Okay.
Plus, they were trying to hold water one side to the other. I don't know if the pipe was there, going off the hill, making a fork or something.
Yep.
The other thing we might wanna look at is that dip down by Randy Lyons's on Buchanan. When you look at how many people scarred that, you know, that manhole.
That's a whole other mess right down in that.
Yeah.
The whole thing needs to be ripped out.
Well, you'd have, you'd have to fill it and then run your storm sewer intakes back to the north to pick up the storm sewer water.
It's been that way for years.
Yeah, that's been...
That's something that, I think we got other things to worry about than, I mean, might...
Yeah, it would be nice to fix it. Everybody has to slow down, but that does slow it down.
That's right.
You can tell by the scars.
Special, yeah. That is a road that I know the county is gonna redo. There's going out. Yep. So that's a road we probably should look at when they redo that, to resurface that.
Redo Buchanan?
Just that.
From 50.
That chunk.
From 50.
Yeah, from 151 over, yep. Since it's gonna be brand new all the way out.
That'd be, that'd be the time to hook into the price.
Okay, well, that is...
There's water mains there that are...
That's been replaced, so that section, I believe. Up to, I think the only section left is under the culvert. But there's old sanitary in there. And that should be careful, gutted and done, right? It's gonna be done. That one was, we talked about four or five years ago doing that. We figured after the solid portion of 136 got done, that it would be destroyed. Held up pretty good, really.
Well, that's why I was wondering, could you just put a generous overlay on that?
Yeah, you could.
You know? Because it's not broke up.
No, it's solid. It's just lumpy.
If that didn't break up after last summer or this summer.
Yeah. We figured it wouldn't be bad, but it held up pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that portion of the street has been on the list for like...
A while.
Since, well, when we came up with that priority list, it was on there already in 2021, spring of 2021.
Yeah, I know, we talked about several times.
I haven't been talking about it.
Then, yeah, Garfield come up and did that one.
Okay, and then page 39 goes into sewer.
Did you want me clicking on anything?
No, I'm gonna go through that when we're done doing this talk.
Just wanted to make sure.
Again, I have money budgeted, 20,000 for the snowplow box. And then we have money budgeted, almost 60,000. If we need to do anything, contract labor, professional fees with sewer. And we, we do have money, 85,000, and I don't think we've touched hardly any of it for sanitary sewers in this year. So if there's something that we need to do, we can use the money in this fiscal year. Otherwise, we can move some over into the reserves and just have it there for when we need it.
Yeah, I don't foresee us getting anything done. We're gonna be busy in the spring.
So I might just move some.
Hey, if you guys wanted a couple manholes, we could, if we could get a contractor to do them, but...
Yeah, I mean, we have some money budgeted, so we could...
However you wanna say it, I don't know, 10, 15,000 dollars a manhole.
That was sizable.
Kind of a side question, how's the wastewater treatment plant? Numbers and everything working out?
Yeah, it was actually a pretty good winter down there. Probably our best winter we've had since it's been built, as far as numbers. You know, we've always warmed up, the water temperature never got down to the point where the activity slowed way down. They kept active and, you know, you'd always get that 40, 45 degree day and that helps.
Keeping all working.
Yeah. Keep them going.
Bacteria is a good thing.
Well, yeah, it was, yeah, I'd have to say that's our best winter down there so far, as far as numbers.
Is there any updates coming if the DNR changes anything or...
The only I've been hearing is, and I don't know how true it is, possibly now land's behind the biosolids anymore. So I don't know what that's gonna entail.
Where are they going, landfill?
Probably got landfill or putting in a sander or something. Hopefully, they won't come to that, but there's talk of it. Other than that, I haven't heard nothing coming down the pipe.
How about water treatment? Are we still good reading-wise on the water that...
Yep, everything's good.
Hopefully.
While we're testing, everything's good. That'll come someday, Steve, it'll be there too.
Ammonia.
Yeah. Ammonia, whatever it was, nitrate, people ask, something.
Okay, we're just gonna jump into the PowerPoint then, unless there's other questions for Phil.
Am I done now?
You're done.
All right.
Good night. Thanks, Phil.
Okay, you can go to the next page. Okay, just, I'm gonna just go through some of the departments, just... Okay, just, um, I'm gonna just go through some of the departments, just so you guys are aware of like where we're at compared to where we were, um, this fiscal year that we're in. Um, police department, it is a little bit higher than the current year, just for the reason that we talked about with the increase in the wages. Um, next slide. Um, fire department is just a little bit higher as well, but that was due to the utilities that Bert talked about, um, after we reviewed what the actual utilities were. And then insurance, um, all of the departments, the insurance, I heard twenty to thirty percent increase for homeowners' liability property insurance, so that's what I budgeted in the budget. So hopefully it's not that, and we've over budgeted, but that's better than under budgeting and then we get the big bills, so. Um, so again, that's the reason for the increase for the fire department. Um, next slide. Um, so for ambulance, it looks like we have a decrease, and for the actual department, we do. Um, and it's just because we normally budget twenty-five thousand dollars and it goes into their capital reserves, but it doesn't actually come out of their budget, it just comes out of the general overview, uh, transfers. So, um, that's why it looks like there's been a decrease. And then just a side note, um, they'll be in their building a year this summer. Um, and after a year, we'll have a better idea of actually what their utility cost will be, and then, you know, like for the budget for next year. Um, roads, bridges and sidewalks, okay, this is the street department in, that's included in the general fund. So, um, we did drop the, um, expenses down quite a bit, just because it was a lot. Um, and we need our, our general fund to balance. Um, so just some things that are included in the budget, like I said, forty thousand for street improvements, and then there's twenty thousand dollars for the sidewalk repair, so, um, we, like I had mentioned in my report, we're looking at getting a sidewalk inspection program going, and so we will need to have some money available for that. Um, fifty-five thousand for storm sewer repairs, and then again, uh, money for the snowplow box. And then this year, there's money to go towards the snowplow chassis.
Why the twenty thousand for sidewalk repair? We're not repairing them, we're just inspecting.
Well, we are inspecting, but, um, some of the cities do go ahead and have them repaired. Um, and the city, there's a cost share program that some cities do. So we pay for part of it, they pay for part of it, um, to get them done. So it's, I just threw it in there, um, that's part of what we'll be talking about coming up in the next couple of meetings about the sidewalk, um, program.
And we, we also have sidewalks on our own property too, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So we always budget some money for that, you know, in case we have to repair one of our own sidewalks.
I mean, what's the scope of the inspection program right, right at the moment, I mean, is it, are we just city employees going, you know, block by block over the course of a couple of years, inspecting them and writing them down, or?
Um, it, it, well, the, what I'm proposing is to do it by quadrant. Um, so each quadrant, each year you'll take a quadrant, you'll inspect the sidewalks, you literally go street by street, you look at all the sidewalks, there's criteria that you have to look at, um, if there's sidewalks that don't meet the criteria, they get marked, um, and they get sent to the homeowners to-
That'll be done in-house, correct?
I'm sorry?
We're not paying, hiring somebody to do this?
Oh, no, the inspection part?
Yes.
No, no, that will be done by staff.
I mean, the, the repairers, repair has always been the homeowner's responsibility, so I was just wondering why the twenty thousand?
Well, it's something, like I said, that we'll talk about, um, coming up.
I just want to make sure we're, we're not paying for sidewalks.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Um, garbage and recycling, um, it did go up a little just because, um, what was in the budget for this year was not enough, it was under budget, and then there's always a four percent annual increase. Um, the library, um, a little bit more, but then that's due to the salaries and benefits increases. Um, the building maintenance, which includes the cleaning of the building, is going to be more than what it was at the old building. And then utilities and insurance for the two buildings, at least until, um, it's decided what is going to happen to the old library once they're totally out of there. Um, the parks is a little bit lower, we did decrease, um, what we have budgeted for park improvements. So that decreased the budget by a little, um, twenty-five thousand or so. Um, pool, we, uh, is a little increased, and, um, a big reason for that is because every five years, we have to repaint the pool, so this will be the first time, um, that the pool is gonna get painted since being built. And we did already get a cost estimate, and that was forty thousand dollars. And a side note, um, we did add pool passes as a line item, we've never had that before, but in our audit, they asked us specifically, they wanted us to be, basically tie, um, the number of pool passes to our revenue and daily admissions to our revenue, so we broke it out, so it was a lot easier when we're audited to provide that information to the auditors. Um, community beautification, um, the expense is increased twenty thousand because, um, I know we had done the twenty thousand dollar facade grants in the past, and that's the area that it should come out of, so I did put that back in, so it's something that we can offer if council also chooses. Um, quick treasure, it went down a little bit, and that was basically due to, um, the overall decrease for salaries and benefits. City hall, the expenses were a little lower, but what is included in the budget, it would be nice to get these columns on this side of the building done, like what we did on the, uh, other side of the building. Um, the police department also needs to have their furnace replaced, they've had some service calls, and it is twenty plus years old, so it's probably time to just buy a new one. Um, and then we're looking at getting out, if you go out the door next to First Avenue, um, there's some caulking and sealing that needs to be done because it's been dripping into the basement, um, for quite some time, so, um, we need to get that area fixed. Should be, shouldn't be, might, you know, too bad, but we need to have it done. And then there's funds in the current year to switch pay, uh, software, which will be coming shortly. We have a demo Wednesday with Tyler. Um, and then we have a phone call with another company coming up Thursday, I believe it is.
Is that their new online software?
I'm sorry?
Is that Tyler's new online software you guys?
Yes, yep. So, um, the general fund, if you look at where we were, um, the revenue is just a tad bit lower, but, um, the expenses are lower than they were last year, so it's, um, estimated that at the end of fiscal year twenty-six, we will have a balance in our general fund of three hundred and, just over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, the road use fund, um, like I said, we have fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-six budget to help with the snowplow box. We also have thirty thousand dollars budgeted for doing curb repairs, and most of those are in the northwest quadrant. Um, we identified a bunch of areas that need some curbs prepared. Um, and even with all of that, it's estimated that we will have a year-end balance of almost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. Local option, I mean, local option pretty much stays the same, the revenue doesn't increase a lot. And the money going out is one for the pool debt and street debt. So it's estimated with everything that we should have a healthy balance of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars by fiscal year end. Um, and that fund is something we could use to do some street repairs, because we can use it for any lawful purpose, which is to help reduce debt, to help repair anything. So, I mean, with a balance like that, I mean, it could be possible to use some of those funds to help with a project like that.
That could be used for our water too, is correct?
Yeah, anything, water, sewers, streets, anything. You could, we can use that local option money for anything. TIF, um, if you can see how the revenue, um, is a little bit lower, but that was from Dubuque County, what they're estimating next year, the expenses are right there, but, um, we should have an estimated balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand by the end of next fiscal year. Debt, um, our payments are going up just a tad, uh, next fiscal year. And just so you're aware, our debt payments are funded by the levy, which I will show that a little bit later. Um, a TIF, and then, um, because you guys did approve, authorizing some TIF money to be used to help with the debt, and then also with, um, our local option sales tax is also approved to pay for the pool debt. Um, water, um, our revenue, it was not quite right for fiscal year twenty-five, but, um, the expenses went up just a tad. Again, included in the budget is a little money to help eliminate that double water main on Tyler, um, money for a fire hydrant, and money for, to help go for that plow box. And then, um, with everything, right now, it's just estimated that we should have at least a little over a hundred thousand at the end of fiscal year. Um, sewer, sewer stays pretty close every year, but, um, I do think we need to also look at the rates for sewer because they have not been raised, um, since basically we put them in place for the project. Um, and I'm not talking major, just, you know, a little bit each year. Um, but things included in the budget are, um, the eighteen thousand for tail lighting sewer line, so we'll keep doing that, and then twenty thousand to help with the snowplow box again, and then, so it's, um, with all that, it's estimated we should have a balance of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year. Okay, so, um, now this goes into more of the valuations and how the taxes are calculated. Um, you can see that, um, the valuations went up in Jones, Dubuque County, which is good. Um, we're valued at almost a hundred and twenty, you know, up close to a hundred and twenty-three million dollars, and that was a, a seven percent growth that we saw from last year, which is good. Um, the next page is, this is just, um, a capture from the last five years of how our levy rates are. So you can see they gradually, they stayed the same, kind of, and then they went up, and then, um, this year, um, they're gonna drop just a little bit, just because, um, the general fund, if you remember, we, it's calculated for us. We can only capture what they tell us we can capture. Um, so that rate went down, uh, the general fund rate went down. The egg land is just set, um, property and liability, that we been, uh, levy for what we need to provide money for, um, property insurance, um, or liability insurance for the general fund and for road use. Employee benefits, that's money for benefits for, um, departments in the general fund and road use, and that's what we need, um, to cover those. And then the debt levy with, um, using the TIF, um, local option, um, we are able to levy less, which is good, that dropped that down. So the overall debt levy, or the overall levy that we're gonna calculate for this year, has decreased from last year. It's gonna be eleven point six three one nine five compared to twelve point five last year, or this year we're in. Um, the next page, this is a fund balance, this is like just an overview of all of our funds. Um, basically, I took the balance of every fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and then, um, I've been looking at reestimating revenues, expenses, um, calculate all that, see where we are as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and then putting our revenues, um, and expenses budgeted in, and then coming up with where I think we'll be at the end of the fiscal year next year. As you can see, I did highlight a few things. Um, Highway one thirty-six, I, if everything is, holds out with the way it should, we should have some money in there. So again, that money we can use for, um, putting towards another street project. Um, the library should have funds left in there, so they probably, we probably want to move that to like the library reserve fund. Um, you can see we'll be positive, um, in our water fund, and then, um, I just highlighted the sewer, so. Any questions about anything?
Were you negative in the water fund last year?
Mm-hmm. Yep, uh, well, according, yeah, we were, if you look at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, we were negative almost eighty-two thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
So with everything this year, with putting the new rates in place and stuff, um, we should end the fiscal year at close to ninety thousand.
I have a couple of, um, review of park reserve, lower ten thousand, do we have any idea? What that is for?
Park reserve, which, I'm sorry, which number are you looking at?
Zero, one, three, in the fund balances.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can take money out of there, there was a couple other funds that I was looking at.
Cable, cable reserve, there's no cable system anymore.
Right, that was one that I thought maybe we could like move that to another area, cause there's no cable anymore, there's no department, we don't do anything with that.
I mean, we have a cow, housing rehab, which has been around forever, and-
Uh-huh.
It's never been used, and even First Avenue Trail Project is ten thousand, or at least forty-seven thousand dollars between all those funds.
Mm-hmm, we could move all that to the streets, or water sewer, maybe water, to get the water fund back up. Yeah, there's been like trail reserve, siren reserve, I mean, the siren reserve, I haven't really used anything out of that. Um, bicentennial, ten-year reserve, I think that money has been sitting there for, forever, for a long time, and never used any out of. You can see, um, Fund one eleven, which is the ARPA money, um, there's sixty, almost sixty-four thousand dollars. So when we have our last and final payout for the one thirty-six project, part of it will come out of that, because you, we had decided to use part of the ARPA funds for that project, so we will pay it right out of that fund, so.
Will that drain that fund?
Yeah, yep, it will dissolve that money then. So we can talk about some of those other reserve funds that have just been sitting there and sitting there, and maybe, um, we can do a resolution to transfer that money out and close those funds out. Okay, um, the next slide just shows you the reserve, uh, the transfers that are in the budget, um, to be done. Like I showed, like I said, TIF dollars, that's to pay for the two of those bonds. Road use, we usually take money out of road use and put money into truck reserves, and then street equipment reserves. Again, local option, that's also money into the debt department to help on that. Um, the one twelve, employee benefits, that money comes in from, and benefits into one twelve, and then it has to be distributed and transferred out to the general fund and to road use. Um, the self-funding, those are the four departments that we transfer money in, and that's when we, when money comes out of that, that's, the sixteen is that fund. Um, the nineteen thousand from general to road use, that is the funds that are getting levied for the property and liability insurance. Let's see, street equipment, reserve to general, um, And then general, we always move money out of the general fund for police, fire equipment, ambulance, fire truck, and then money to the pool also. Questions? Okay, the debt payments, I just did an overview of all of our debt payments. And one thing to be aware of, our 2017 street bond, which was the bond that we used when we did the north part of Highway 136, in '26, that bond is paid off. Yeah, so it's good to know. And you can see the rest of the bonds, the water, the water one, it doesn't mature till '32. And then all the others are '34, '37, '39, so. That's it. If you go to the tab that says taxes and valuation. So this is, if you remember, the state legislators put into place the max levy calculation where you're locked in, you can only do so much based on your increase for the year. So with our almost seven, basically 7% growth, we can only do the 3.43. So we are capped at only capturing the 7.6563, which equates to $933,694,000 in taxes. And then if you go down the line, the liability property insurance, that's that levy amount, and the egg land. And then down below, in the middle, under special revenues, is the benefits for FICA IFRS and health insurance for Cobb, things like that, and the general fund and road use. So that's that levy amount. And then at the bottom is the debt service levy. So there, again, is that 11.63195 total levy for the city for the budget. And then I did just include in here, so you guys can see, a copy of our valuation statements that we get from both Dubuque and Jones County. And then under Supporting Documents tab, I just have a copy of the transfers for you to see better. And then the next page is the ambulance. So we get money in from the townships for our ambulance. So that shows that amount that we're getting, a little over $27,000. And that goes into the revenue for the ambulance department. And then an Equipment Capital Plan. So this lists all of our equipment that we have in the road use department, and that we use for water sewer as well, and then our ambulances, and then our fire equipment. Just kind of, we update the hours, we update the miles, we look at when, if it's in there, you know, when we might change it out. So you're aware of that. And we probably need to, we try to do, keep on a rotation with our vehicles. So we'll probably be looking at buying a new truck in the next fiscal year, not the one we're planning for, but the next one. What's highlighted in red has been sold. The fire truck, it has not been sold yet, but we're going to put that out on auction site. So hopefully that gets sold here in the next couple of months. And then the very last spreadsheet was just employees with a 3% budgeted increase. And that just shows the amount of the increase. And then it also shows the total with all the benefits, what each employee will be making with that much of an increase. Any questions?
I guess I have a little bit of, not like an, I don't know, issue, I guess, but to give the police department a 22% raise and everybody else a 3% raise.
It's actually only 15.
Okay.
We, we had looked at doing like 10%, then we looked at 15%, and then we looked at doing 22%. And basically, those amounts came from what we know, the agencies that our officer has actually applied for. So to keep him in the range that he's applying for.
I think that we, there's things that, and I, I'm not trying to say I don't value Brad because I do. He does a phenomenal job as does Fred. But my concern is, he's also looking at agencies that are not here, where he lives. And there's a big piece of that that, that's, that's valued, too. You know, he's not having to drive to another community to go to work and things like that. So I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration as well. You know, we have public works employees that have been here for 15 years, 15-plus years, and are making less than Sammy, who's been here less than six months. Like, I think that that's something we really need to look at. And Sammy does an amazing job, but so do they. And so I guess I'm having a hard time reconciling a 10% to 15% raise for one department and 3% for everybody else. I would like to see a higher increase. If we're going to do that, then I think we need to do a higher increase for everyone else. And I also think that the, we've talked a lot about a third officer, about getting them here, getting them trained before Fred retires, so that they can move into Brad's position. So I guess I don't understand why we're going to put that on the back burner now. I mean, in the last two years, we've talked extensively about it.
Yeah, I'm totally aware of that. And Fred and I did talk about that, but we, he's not going to leave until like May of '27. And it's only '25. So we talked about not doing that until next year. That would give them a whole year, almost a year and a half, to have another officer get trained, so that when Fred retires, hopefully Brad moves up, and then we have a very trained officer that can just assume the responsibilities.
But then we move back down to two officers instead of three?
Well, if you want to keep the third officer, then Brad and the other officer can actually train that officer.
And that makes sense. I just, I don't know, I think, I'd like to see a third officer. I'd like, I think there's a lot of non-patrolled time that, and with the rate that Cascade continues to grow and with the issues that we've had over the last couple of years with theft and things like that, I, I would like to see a third officer.
All right, well, I will, we're going to have to have another budget meeting then, next week, because that's going to take a lot of calculating. I personally don't think our general fund can support that, adding another officer, because the, the little bit of increase of giving them a 15% raise is way less than adding a whole nother officer.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Thousands of dollars less. Because then it also affects their, their benefits, so.
I mean, what does the rest of the council think? This is something we've talked about a lot, so if maybe I'm off, way off base here, I'm the only one that thinks this way, but.
The part-time works well, doesn't it, to fill in?
When we can get.
Yeah.
Mostly we use them for special events.
For events.
Because they're all employed other places, so it's not like we can use them on a regular basis, really.
With the exception of one who's retired, but he has to have a part-time job, just to keep himself busy.
Sure.
I don't know, Fred, I mean, you've talked about a third officer for a long time, but as far as your police reports, we don't get a lot of stuff through the win, I know it's the winter time, but, you know.
And we do have Dubuque, Jones County that, when we're not here, do step in and hold out.
Right, and they're here quite a bit.
Likewise, we go out on the highway and help them, too, in both counties.
I think we got a plan to budget for another police officer next year, not this year. So I think we should stay with that. I mean, instead of making Deanna go out and try to find $80,000 more dollars to try to find another police officer, then we just stay what we got.
I mean, like I said, I can go through the budget and I can do a, keep this and do a preliminary budget with adding a third officer, just to show you what it's going to do to our budget. I mean, I know we've talked about it for a long time, but if the budget doesn't support it, it doesn't support it.
I guess in regards to the 15% or difference, obviously, every, I'm sure Public Works, I mean, usually what we try to do is, is keep them in range, so they're not looking elsewhere, you know, in the ranges. I assume that these, like for Public Works, for example, has been looked at over the course of time. I know we've had to do some bump ups because, you know, we're falling behind on wages and those type of things. And all of a sudden, you got people looking to leave and go elsewhere, you know, with certain qualifications. Again, I think on the police department, I mean, if, if we're $5 less for personnel, you know, with certain qualifications, we're going to be losing people wherever. So I mean, it just really depends on the, what they're doing, you know, what their job is, et cetera, as far as any bump ups and those type of things. I mean, every, we're lucky, our, our Public Works seems like it's pretty static. We bring people in and they stay for long periods of time. So I assume they're fairly satisfied with their wages. And it would always be nice to be able to make them more than satisfied, but that's kind of what we always look at, is what prevailing wages are.
When's the last time we did look at that?
But what?
The last time we did kind of an overview of her?
I don't know, I mean, I didn't.
Does anybody remember when, last time that was about?
I know over the last two years, the wages, like for Public Works, I know did get increased quite a bit.
We did 4% raises the last two years, I believe.
I mean, we could, I can do a 4% raise. I just hope that the, the budget supports that, which I can show, like I said, I can do a four and a five and come back and we can, I can, we can review that.
I'd just like to know where they're sitting in comparison.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see how that looks.
You talk about other communities and what they're paying for, right?
Yeah.
More so than, you know, just get an idea, make sure we're in the ballpark.
Yeah, that's what, you know, close to our population size and everything, kind of where we're at in this area, paying scale is. You know, make sure that they're.
I can get wage resolutions from other cities that are similar, similar in population.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I can also put it out online, too. The, the thing to keep in mind with like the police department, if we don't, if we can't retain our officer and he goes elsewhere, when Brad, Fred retires and we have to hire a chief, we're going to be starting a chief out a lot more than what, what Fred's making right now. There's no way we're going to hire a chief for what he's making, there's no way.
A lot.
And then if we have to have, hire an officer, that, and if they're not certified, that means certifying them, which is with the certification, the meals and everything required, it's $20,000. And sometimes we spend that money, and then they're here a year, and then, I mean, sure, the, the agency that takes them usually pays us off, you know, the contract off, but it's just the time and the, the expense and.
Agreed, and, and Brad's a really good fit for this community. And he brings, and there's a reason why there's other communities looking at Brad, because Brad brings a skill set to the table that most places want. And he's got a great demeanor about him, and he handles himself well in most situations. So he's got a lot of assets going for him, so I, I think, we definitely want to hold on to Brad. So I, I agree with all of that. I just was like, you know, for our city workers, I just like to make sure we're, we're keeping them on task.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So our, okay, just so we're all on the same page, are we all able to meet then next? Because we have to decide this next week. Because I have to have everything in the budget, the portal for the department of management.
Monday, Monday?
Monday, if possible.
I can do it.
This coming Monday, I'm going to be gone, but.
You'll be gone?
Yeah, through, through Wednesday. I, I have surgery on Monday, so I'm going to be gone.
Is just the, adding the third officer what we would need to meet for? Because if, I mean, I, if that's, if this consensus is we don't want to do that, we want to hold off another year, then I, I will follow that consensus, that's.
I'm fine with pulling off to the next year here and kind of get and settle on things, but I definitely think it has to be a priority on the next agenda for the next year. We have to get them in, have to get training started immediately. To give window of time for training for Brad and for Brad to get him trained, and to make sure that he's going to stay, because we've run into that before, too. We, we might get somebody in there, you know, we don't know.
Stay a year and?
Right, so we, we, we need to make that a high priority if we're waiting till next year, because it has to.
So do we need to meet or do we not need to meet?
No, we don't need to meet.
I don't think we need to, if, if Meg is okay with it, then I'm okay with just waiting.
I mean, yeah, I just, I wanted to address it because I feel like we've talked about it so much since I've been on council that.
Yep.
Well done.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions with the budget or? And like I said, I will, you, we approve the budget, the salaries in July or in June, actually, starting. So I will work on 4% and 5% instead of 3% and just see where, what that does to the budgets.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So we're at number 12, adjourn into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51I. I need a motion to go out of regular session into closed session.
Make a motion.
Motion by Delaney?
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant, roll call?
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush.
Aye. No box casters, right?
Nope.
Oh, yeah, it needs to show off.
Yeah, please.
When you guys get done, can you come get me in the hallway? Cool, thank you.
No problem. And you're, you're going?
I'm going? Why would I go?
Hold on a second.
For closed session?
I have to be present or it can't happen.
Oh, gotcha, okay.